I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in a moment in silence for prayer or reflection. Terry, if you could call the roll please.
Kathy Cox here. Pat Rooney.
Here.
Nicole Cohen here. John Mastin.
Here. Please stand and join me in the class.
(Inaudible)
Terry, do we have anything for call of the public? Moving on to recognition of visitors. Well, time has come, Mr. Rooney. Can I call you Mr. Rooney like I'm sitting in your office in ninth grade? I think we want to recognize you for your service, long service. You've served this district in one capacity since 1971. And so, just a couple of years, forty-seven. And so, I'd like to thank you. I think our superintendent gave you a few words in the presentation.
I'm actually going to use this microphone, Mr. Rooney, because I want the audience to hear. Stand there in front of the board. As Mr. Mastin noted, Mr. Rooney has been serving our district since 1971, when he joined us as a teacher. And he has actually served four terms on the school board. So, he has been on our school board for the last sixteen years, serving the students of our city. We appreciate your service. We appreciate your voice of reason, your intellectual curiosity, and all of the experience that you have brought to the board.
Thank you.
So, we have a plaque. And for those of you, it's actually quite a nice and heavy weight. If you didn't think you really wanted anything to hang on this wall. But I would like to read the words on the plaque, because they were selected specifically for Mr. Rooney. And have contrast somehow. There we go. In recognition of Pat Rooney for outstanding leadership, with the insight to provide thoughtful guidance, and the character to influence greatness, you've made a powerful impression. Your quest for excellence is a true inspiration. Thank you for dedication and integrity. With appreciation, Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One.
Thank you.
And you want to say any words?
Yeah, I'm gonna take this home and read it to my wife, and maybe she'll appreciate it. But anyway, yeah, it's been a pleasure. You know, I've been in education for a long time, and then, once I retired from high school, some people asked me to run for the school board. Everyone that I've really had contact with is just... There are so many people that are interested in quality schools. And you know, it starts at every level. And you know, you go to the schools, and it starts with the custodians, who were the first people who pitched the school, make it really presentable. And then, it's... And the other staff there, the support staff, they all play a big role. And then, of course, you get to the teachers and administrators. But it's so big, the people are really interested in doing a good job for kids. When, you know, you have the superintendent, everyone up here, all of our school board members. The one thing they're interested in is really creating real good schools, so kids can get a great education. And the last thing I'd like to say is, you know, I'm really committed to the traditional public schools. And I'll give you an example. When I was growing up, there... For years, there were only two institutions in America that really took everyone and made something out of them. And that was the army or the military under the draft. It would take kids in that all of a sudden, you didn't think were going to be able to make it. And they made them into good, productive human beings that went back out and made a difference in the community. But today, there's only the traditional public school that takes everyone in, regardless. They don't sift or sort or whatever. And they're charged with going ahead and doing something that will make a difference in those kids' lives. And I've seen it over and over, all the years I was in education and on the school board. It's just amazing what this institution does. And the last thing I'd like to say, there's certain institutions that bind Americans together. And one of them is the traditional public school. It goes ahead and educates, so they can go on and into the workforce, or college, or whatever. It also goes ahead and passes along our history and all the things about that make our country a great country. And I mean, this is one of the few institutions that does it. And they do it over and over, and they're criticized all the time, but they keep doing it. So, I'm really committed to the traditional public schools. Thanks a lot. It's been a great pleasure to work for the people of Lake Havasu City. And I'm not running for office either.
Superintendent Assayer, you guys another award?
Yes, thank you. This past week, on December the twelfth, our incoming board members attended the ASBA New Board Member Orientation, and did a whole day on building law and various other pieces that are related to our board service. Actually, Mr. Rooney has been a leader in this area as well. And some of you might remember, if you were here in the past, that he was presented a certificate of boardsmanship for all of the training that he has completed. While at this conference, and we do not stage, and this is best a day listing, the ASBA also gave an award to our district. And the award was the result of a... Every one of our members, and we have continued this tradition with our new members, have completed the new board member orientation. And while none of you agrees with ASBA, the importance of being a board member, and providing that service with no payment, with no compensation of any kind, spending hours of time, spending your own money to visit places, have gone and learned about what it means to be effective as a board member. And every one of our board members has also attended at least a law conference, and has been keeping up to date with even some of our local events that we've had. And so, the award was actually only presented to twelve districts in the state of Arizona, which says something for our commitment to making sure we have the training that we need to function well as a board and as a district. And so, the total board, boardsmanship award, so meaning that every one of the board members gets an award as a board, was provided in the Lake Havasu School District. And so, what they provided us is an individual plaque for each board member, which I will hand out, that Mrs. Deagle was also able to receive this plaque. Hold it up, because it's an amazing plaque. Again, wonderful, the twelve districts in the state. And this is to the Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One. And the board members are on here, John Mastin, Nicole Cohen, Kathy Cox, Pat Rooney, December fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, for commitment to board development and continued education attainment. The Board of Directors of the Arizona School Boards Association hereby confers the total board, boardsmanship award. So, congratulations. I'm gonna hand that to you, Mr. Mastin.
All right. Next on our agenda, I would like to recognize State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Diane Douglas. You have a presentation?
Yes, I do, sir. And I...
I may have a second to have to turn the mic off.
Oh. And that would be red. Let me hold it.
There it is.
Oh. There we go. Okay. Thank you very much. President Mastin, Superintendent Assayer, and board members, I want to thank you for allowing me to be here tonight, as you've heard, and members of the audience of Lake Havasu City. As you heard, I'm Diane Douglas, and I have the honor and privilege of serving you as Arizona Superintendent of Public Instruction. Did I turn that off? No, good, I did not. The first thing I'd like to do today is extend my sympathy to the Mendez family. I heard that there was a tragedy in this district last night, and I'm so saddened. Often, I served on the Peoria School Board for many years. And people would ask me, what is the hardest part of the job? And no doubt, the hardest part of the job is the tragedies that you hear and you share in. So, my prayers, my thoughts and prayers go out to that family, especially at this most difficult time of year. And my prayers are with your district, because I know it will impact every employee, every family member, and every child that is here. So, I'd also like to congratulate Board Member Rooney for your service. My heart is with school boards. I believe very much in our local control. And I know, I've sat in your seat, not that particular seat, but I've sat in that seat. And I know how challenging it can be, but how very rewarding it can be. So, thank you for that service. I'd like to share with you, one of the reasons why it has been such a privilege for me to serve as Arizona Superintendent, is because I believe we have no greater duty as a state than to educate our children. And it's not just about making them worker bees and college applicants. It's about making them successful citizens to protect, defend, and perpetuate our republic and our way of life for future generations. The intent of the American education system, as you already heard so well, it's a unifier. It is, we take every child, and we want them to follow their dreams, their goals, their ambitions, with their God-given talents. And that's not the way it is in many, many parts of this world to this day, that your career, your future, your life, or lack thereof, is determined by some government test. And that we have such an amazing system, I believe it's one well worth protecting. I'd like to share just a smidgen of information with you tonight about the state of Arizona. I've shared this with our State Board of Education and with many other organizations I've spoken with very recently. Fifty-six percent of our third graders can't read and write. They're basically failing, reading and writing. And forty-seven percent of our third graders can't pass basic arithmetic statewide. And that is staggering to me after four years of instruction. So, to me, we are doing something wrong. And if we look at it at the opposite end, as our universities are growing and growing and growing, and want every single student to go to college, sixty percent of them need, whether community college or university, need remedial work, whether it's in math, or English, or all of the above. So, to that end, I want to congratulate Lake Havasu City on, number one, your Reading Horizons program. The reason, in my opinion, and I've been fighting this battle for twenty-five years, our kids can't read, is because we teach them to view words as symbols, rather than to be phonetically decoded. And when our children can learn that, they can be successful. When our children can learn addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division, they will be successful. Just very briefly, in January of two thousand and ten, our State Board of Ed basically agreed, not the one that the members are sitting now, but as a board, agreed to adopt what's called the Common Core standards. And they were sight unseen, they were unreleased at the time. We've been able to change some of that, put stronger reading back in, put math back in, put better writing standards back into those standards. But very recently, in October of two thousand and eighteen, as our children still struggle with math and reading, I went to our State Board of Ed, and I presented to them the Hillsdale Barney Charter School standard with a recommendation, if we want our children to be successful in reading and successful in math, the foundation on which every single other subject is built for success, we need to do something differently if we want them to be able to go to college. Those standards, where Common Core had no track record, Hillsdale Standards has had a fifteen-to-twenty-year track record of success of getting students where we say we want our children in Arizona to be. So, that's why I'm here tonight, because to recognize your Classical Academy at Oro Grande and the work that you're doing there. Because I would have loved to have brought that for every single student in Arizona, because I believe not only would it have made them successful in reading and math and writing, but it also would have brought them a great education in science, and in world history, and American history. But alas, it was not to be. The State Board was not even willing to discuss it. So, but I'm glad you have, and I'm so proud of this district. I talk about you all over the state, when I go across the state, to share the wonderful work you're doing and this opportunity you're bringing to your children. So, with that, I'd like to make a couple of presentations, if I may, Mr. President. First, on behalf of the Department of Education and myself, I'd like to present each one of you, for your board's service to your community, a challenge coin. And for those who are not familiar, challenge coins are a tradition from the American military. And every unit would have a coin, and they are presented for excellence in service to whatever your unit does. But now, the fun part of it is you carry it with you at all times. So, then you can challenge each other to present your coin. And if you are challenged and you have it, then the challenger buys the drink. Non-alcoholic, of course. But if you're challenged and you don't have it, then you buy the drink. And they're always presented with a handshake. So, with that, God bless you and thank you for your service. Thank you for your service, God bless you. And you, Mr. Rooney, thank you. I also have a few certificates I would like to present, if I may, Mr. President. The first is for your Superintendent Diana M. Assayer. And if you don't mind, I'll read it. Certificate of recognition awarded to Superintendent Assayer. On behalf of Arizona Department of Education, congratulations on the success of the Lake Havasu Classical Academy at Oro Grande. In recognition to your commitment to improving the educational opportunities for the students of Lake Havasu City, for your hard work in implementing the Hillsdale Barney Charter School Program, Lake Havasu Unified School District continues to be a model of success and innovation. Signed this day on December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. I wish it was just me. There are a lot of people who were. I'm not done yet. This next one, I would like to present certificate of recognition awarded to the Lake Havasu City Unified School District Governing Board. On behalf of the Arizona Department of Education, congratulations on the success of Lake Havasu Classical Academy at Oro Grande. In recognition of your commitment to improving the educational opportunities for students of Lake Havasu City, and your hard work in implementing the Hillsdale Barney Charter School Program, Lake Havasu Unified School District continues to be a model of success and innovation. Signed this day on December eighteenth. Mr. President, will you accept this on behalf of the board?
I will, and I would ask Mrs. Cohen to open and accept.
I'd ask you to ask her not to. I have one more certificate, and this is... It is from the Department of... Yes. But it's also on behalf of the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, personally. This is a certificate of recognition awarded to Nicole Cohen. On behalf of the Office of Superintendent Diana Douglas, congratulations on the success of the Lake Havasu Classical Academy at Oro Grande. In recognition of your commitment to classical education, which you exhibited by bringing the Hillsdale Barney Charter School Program to Lake Havasu City, thereby improving the educational opportunities for your students. December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Mr. President, thank you for the time in the meeting tonight.
Thank you.
To all who and to you, all of the community members and teachers, thank you for what you do for the children each and every day.
Next on our agenda is the Lake Havasu Association Association, Mrs. Nochowski.
President Mastin, members of the board, Superintendent Assayer, director, staff, students, and community members. Carol Nochowski here, for your monthly update for LHCEA. Locally, we had two members participate in our Community Day this month. We have one member on the Instruction and Professional Development Task Force. This group of members reviews the needs of both our classified and our certified members in the areas of professional development. The other member was a part of the Government Relations and Legislative Action Task Force. This group makes recommendations to the AEA Board regarding the content and priority of the coming year's legislative agenda. This time, next month, our fifty-fourth legislative session will be in session. This time, next month, we will have heard from our governor to what his plans are for public education in Arizona. And if you have not heard the great news, we have representation. Newly elected House Representative Leo Viasucci will be sitting as committee member in the House Education Committee. It is not too late, I'm sorry, it's not too early to reach out and contact him. Take a moment in these next three to four weeks, and let him know what you would like him to make a priority when it comes to legislation for public ed. Is it a change in funding? Is it a change in high-stakes testing? How about certified requirements? The time is now, and if you don't know how to contact him, let me know, and I can help. Again, this is in the back of my... And finally, what I feel is even more exciting than that, is our very own Jamie Pestadeagle is going to be sitting as a member of the transition team of our newly elected superintendent, State Superintendent. It begins now. Rural Arizona has an opportunity to have a voice in multiple capacities. The path has been paved. We must continue to take those steps to make public education a priority in Arizona, and most importantly, provide a voice for public education in rural Arizona. Happy holidays, enjoy us New Year, and we'll see you in two thousand and nineteen.
I have a number four as our consent agenda, and I am motioning now.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
I have a five, old business, five point one, is the approval of land exchange. Mr. Murray?
Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the exchange of land between the Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One and Mr. Mayor Actarza. In accordance with a mutually agreed upon memorandum of understanding, and authorize an appraisal of both properties, the cost of which will be the responsibility of Mr. Actarza. Previous requests were brought before the board in October of two thousand and seventeen and March of two thousand and eighteen. The Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One has received a request for an exchange of land. The district currently owns parcel one oh eight dash twelve dash one forty-one. And Mr. Actarza owns parcels one oh eight dash twelve dash one thirty-nine and one oh eight twelve one forty-four, both located on Swanson Avenue. The exchange would occur after an appraisal, for which Mr. Actarza will be responsible, and only if the district's property is of equal or lesser value than the other parcel, or improvements are made to increase the value obtained by the district if the exchange take place. A resolution for the land exchange must be signed by all board members present at the board meeting at which the land exchange is approved. And a resolution will authorize the board president to sign the land exchange agreement. The resolution will also direct the district to record the deed. Further resolution, the governing board president will authorize to sign the deeds at a later date. And the board postponed this item just by way of information, back on the number twenty of two thousand and eighteen.
I will continue the motion on five point one. Discussion? Any discussion from the audience?
I'm actually quiet today. I just want to make sure that the audience understands that this is not a contract. It's a normal understanding of a decision.
Well, and the way that this is put together, and Mr. Murray will correct you if I'm wrong, is under section five. We've got the first four paragraphs line up how we're going to do the land exchange. And then, once we've completed those four bullet points, five and six are the start of the framework for a contract that would go into place on the housing section. And we've got in here that we would have a pool that would be a fifteen percent per month per unit. Mr. Mayor would set aside a certain number of units. The cap would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then, if units are not available, it would be fifteen percent of the then-current annual rent for a two-bedroom that would come back to the district to offset that loss of available property. So, I think we've got a little bit of a meeting in the lines here. We're looking to get this back from Mr. Mayor after we approve it tonight. Mr. Murray?
That can be determined by the board, but I would recommend probably within two to four weeks. I'll leave that time there for you.
Yeah, we've got an agenda, I think, point on the second, if I'm hearing correctly. So, what's the last eight we can put this on the agenda if we have any changes?
I do believe that is the second for any changes. It's my understanding that you can approve it now with the assumption that you would agree to then signing the agreement at a later date. But if they want to propose any changes in the number one, then it would have to come back to the board for discussion. And so, that would have to come back to the board agenda. January second is the date, and I'm trying to think of the fifteenth, twenty-second?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth is the date? The eighth is a work session, so the fifteenth is the work.
January moves quicker right here.
And so, the only issue might be that we do have holidays coming in corporate.
Right. So, any further discussion from the board?
So, if they do not meet the January second date, they can always approach the district to have included for the February meeting.
Correct.
the district to have it included for the February meeting if they do not agree to these terms of the memorandum of understanding.
Any other discussion from the audience?
Can I have a copy of that?
No. We'll get you one.
That'd be great.
All right, Carrie.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen? Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Item 5.2 is discussion possible actions regarding expansion of Lake Havasu Classical Academy at Oro Grande. Superintendent Sager.
Thank you, Mr. Maston. As I'm ready to read, I'd also, if I may, make a comment, thanking Mrs. Douglas for the recognitions for our movement on Oro Grande Magnet School. I do want to share, while everybody is still in the room, that this was a conversation that began with our principals during the 16, 17 school year, that we needed to do something to help to bring enrollment back to our schools, and that we all agreed that that would be the appropriate focus for our community would be a classical magnet school. We really need to express our appreciation to Mr. Hawkins, who happens to be here tonight, because he paved the way for Hillsdale to share that curriculum with us. And a lot of credit needs to go to Mr. Bitterman, who has done all of the groundwork to make this happen and working with his staff, all of his staff as well, because it would not be successful at the grade levels that we've opened without the efforts at Oro Grande. So I do want to please share that credit there as well.
You just laid seven.
So as you are all fully aware, we started our Classical Magnet Academy at Oro Grande as a K-1 program for the 17, 19 school year, and we are bringing forward to the board the recommendation that the governing board approve the expansion of the Lake Havasu Classical Academy from a K-2 program, which would become from 1920 to a K-6 program for the 1920 school year. This recommendation includes the adoption of the Hillsdale College Classical Education Scope and Sequence, as well as such materials necessary for full implementation. These would include materials from the Core Knowledge Foundation and publishers of classical curriculum resources. As I mentioned, the board did approve this magnet for the 18, 19 school year with an annual expansion by grade level. With the success of the curriculum and instructional strategies, interest continues to grow from our parents and our community. These same parents have been pivotal in sharing, excuse me, sharing the benefits of the classical curriculum with other parents, and would like the curriculum to be available to all grade levels, as many families have students in the grade levels that do not follow the classical approach. Students in the classical education have a structured spiraling curriculum, allowing students to work in content repeatedly through multiple grade levels. This approach has been successful at other classical schools, beginning with grades K through 6. The Oro Grande principal and classical staff have seen success in the benefits of the classical curriculum. The school-wide classical education would unify the staff and allow for a deeper and more successful collaborative approach. Recent training and classical school visits have provided a guiding compass that shows a K-6 program would serve all of our community. The magnet has fulfilled, excuse me, would serve the students of Oro Grande and would provide a desirable and attractive option for all of our community. The magnet has fulfilled its purpose in attracting students who would otherwise choose a private school. We do have a PowerPoint presentation, it's not very long, so if you want to wait till we have motion on the board before we present it?
I make a motion that we approve, item 5.2.
Second.
And if I could invite Mr. Bitterman to come up this morning? Share some of the information through the PPI slides?
Sure.
I think you know I was going to do that.
I did not know that. You said we'll talk about it, and then you never did.
Welcome over with you.
Thank you, it'd be great. At least when I'm called up for that, I didn't get nervous at all. I didn't have any anticipation.
I would like to go back, because if we expand this as a K-6, we would like to become the Oro Grande Classical Academy, and have that be a classical academy with our sponsorship as a school site. Do you want to talk a little bit about some of the key components?
Sure. Key components, yeah, thanks. You can see them up there. We're excited to go this direction. I just think about it every night, and it's been six months, and you know, to see it happen, I'm really excited to see it. So, the classical culture, fostering accelerated learning, mastery of content, exceptional behavior to create habits of the mind and cultivate moral as well as academic excellence. What makes this program special is the addition of the virtue education, which is the foundation for all knowledge. We're prompting the learner to strive for wisdom. It's humanities first, literature, history, grammar, reading, writing, and human reasoning, all integrated within each other. Masterpieces of music and art are aligned and integrated. Mathematics and science are taught systematically K through 6 in connection with the study of the humanities. And then we do this through a historical lens. We learn from our paths, from our greats, engaging students in great conversation of the past, not only broadens their worldview, but develops informed and wise citizens. And you mentioned that, that's what we want, we want our citizens to be wise. Literature is placed at the appropriate grade level based on this historical pattern. This chronological, and I always have to find another word, cyclical view of history allows students to develop a timeline through which they are able to filter current events and make connections and predictions. We were asked why, why do we want to do this, and of course, it's to grow our community, give it a robust choice, something different. We want to be an attractive choice, not just a choice, but an attractive choice on that South Side, where we have two schools that I won't say we battle with, but we have students that are, have that choice of going to Calvary, going to HPA. So we've seen a little reduction in students, and we've seen that change when we opened up our kindergarten and our first. For our students, we believe in the importance to learn from the past to improve our future. We want to be able to study and learn from our nation's founders. We believe in developing and modeling moral character, and we believe in the pursuit of wisdom. The philosophy and mission, we kind of talked about this a little bit. Of course, it's not all my thoughts, but I did steal from what I thought was the great leaders. So, and I picked what I felt that the direction we should go, this can be something that can be modeled or changed, but our classical education puts young minds to work and will lead young people to understand themselves and the world around them through the lens of virtue. Our mission is to offer a content-rich classical education based on Western culture traditions, where all disciplines are interrelated, allowing students the ability to think independently and critically. We purpose to partner with our supportive parents, provide a safe and challenging environment, and instill principles of moral character and civic virtue in order to produce moral leaders. You're welcome.
This one is actually a little hard to read, but one of the things that we thought about is, we really talk about a classical education, and it's juxtaposed with a progressive education. And so we talk about the progressive, traditional progressive schooling, which has been around since the late 18th century, early 1900s, that has slowly been taking the place of the classical education, which had been around first centuries before that. And so when we talk about what are the comparisons in the traditional progressive system, we have reading, writing, everything, those are separate content areas, they're taught separately, they aren't necessarily integrated with all of the subject areas. Did you just sit down?
Oh, no. Don't get a drink of water, your mouth is a little dry. Come back when you're ready.
And the group that's integrated with it, I already noted.
I was squirreling ways. I'll send you.
The classical curriculum integrates the content from a more historical lens. The focus is more on cognitive learning, the focus is on the student, whereas in the classical curriculum is more on listening and learning, not that there isn't interaction, but that isn't the major mode of learning. The other big difference is the idea in progressive education that the teacher is the guide to learning, that in fact, the students are responsible for what they learn and how they learn it, whereas in classical education, the teacher is the provider of the initial knowledge, and that while students learn to think and process information, first is learning the information. A lot of, in perspective of this teacher career research, is it's what's happening, what can I bring in that will help students understand the world as it's going, whereas in the classical curriculum, it's a very coherent, research-based and traditional lesson within, lessons within units, and the unit's very structured. And then, the emphasis, and we hear it over and over again, is that we're focusing on workforce preparation, on college and career readiness, whereas in a classical education, the emphasis on liberal arts, that when you have a very liberal arts-based education, you are prepared for anything the world may bring to you or that you may interact with in the world. The other areas that we look at are somewhat student-friendly vocabulary, it's the idea that students have to pay the interest, that we have to make sure they understand it in their language, whereas when we look at classical, we expect them to learn rich vocabulary, be able to express their thoughts with rich vocabulary, not that they wouldn't do otherwise out in their, in the community when they're in different settings, but that they have the academic vocabulary in the classroom. The message of the story, this is kind of an interesting concept, and we actually don't really talk about the moral of the story anymore so much, that in progressive education is what is, what is the message, what is it that you take from the story versus what is the intended moral of the story? What is it that you are supposed to learn from this situation, and how do you make that connection to the virtues and morals of our society? And then, again, the learning is organized around programs and projects, and is not necessarily focused on specific content area, whereas the classical is greater focus on fiction and nonfiction content from history and science to read, to teach, reading them, and so forth, but also the reading of great works, the poetry, the sayings, the phrases, all of the things that come through with cultural education. And then finally, looking back to the philosophical base, our current progressive education is really based on the works of John Dewey, of Eric Verbal, and Rousseau, whose name is just a shame to make it first name. And our classical education is truly based on the words of Aristotle, Plato, and Socrates. So that's really the difference between the two, and they are different, they aren't the same. So what are some of the distinguishing features of the classical classroom? Can I turn that one back over to you?
Is your mouth dry?
Yes, it is. Can you tell? Oh, yeah.
I've been in communication with Great Hearts, and one of their directors was very important in creating this slide, the five distinguishing features of classical classroom, and he'll be coming here February 6th to talk to our staff, our community, our school about this same, the same slide basically, so, and that'll go, that'll go out, I'll send that out to everybody. The five distinguishing features is an emphasis on imitation, and we model those great works, those written texts, hence the need for carefully selected children's literature, history books, and other content text. The emphasis on careful thoughtful speech patterns, which sometimes when you're presenting, you don't have those, but when you're classically trained, you do, thoughtful speech patterns such that precise, insightful, even eloquent language is promoted in every classroom exchange. One thing I kind of failed to put on here was the Socratic method of instruction, which that's really part of that as well. Number three says it's a palpable sense of wonder, as students are led to discover the wide world about them, in every activity in the classroom, learning geography, conducting basic science experiments, observing and sketching a flower, reciting a poem. I don't know how to use this, by the way. You did that very well. The fourth thing, an emphasis on the basic rudiments of literacy and numeracy, through attention to the grammar of language, how words work, parts of speech, you mentioned it, Mrs. Douglas, just how important that portion is, the current sentences, and the mastery of math facts that serve as a basis for arithmetic and later advanced mathematics. In other words, memorization and understanding of basic elements of language and computation would be part and parcel of all the elementary grades. And the last one, is just the orderly, joy-filled, loving classroom. It's central to the classical classroom, as students begin to discover that learning is a pleasure that fills the entire lifespan, and knowledge is a treasure for those who are willing to undertake the hunt through discipline, attention, and the wisdom of many, those counts, those great minds that have written all of those works.
So this is a slide that I did not give you in the packet the last time when I passed out to the board. I did want to bring this forward for you to look at, and if you're looking at the screen directly in front of you or the screen behind you with everyone, what this is, is our enrollment report from the week before, not this past week, but the week before. And so what you see, and just for the audience, this column right here is the total number of students that we have per grade level right now. We talked about our district in declining enrollment, and you can see here, right now we have 1,760 students at the high school, we have a little over 800 students at the middle school. But then, as you look at our classes, our total class of sixth graders moving up is about 403. Then it drops down into the 380s, then the 60s, et cetera. So you can see that our numbers coming in are getting smaller and smaller. That's what we talked about when we had a declining enrollment district. So as these smaller classes move through, the numbers at the high school and middle school do get smaller. We do get students at the middle and high school level from Calvary, since they don't have high school, but that doesn't necessarily make up for the overall declining enrollment. Next to that, what you see are our current Oro Grande numbers, and right now, we have two teachers per grade level at Oro Grande, and this is our recommended capacities. Now, we aren't always able to keep these capacities, because students don't come to us in packages that size, but we recommend that kindergarten be around 25, first grade at 27, and second, then 29, and then 30 at fifth and sixth. And so you can see that with the existing teachers right now, we still have, if we were to fill to capacity, we still have growth potential without spending any extra dollars for 49 students at Oro Grande, so we could enroll 49 more students and not have to hire a future. 22 students brings us in ADM of 102,000. 44 students would bring in ADM of 204,000. So just by increasing the enrollment at Oro Grande to capacity, we would have another $200,000 in income that would more than pay for anything that we would want to do at that school. And several other schools are like that as well in terms of capacity. And so what you can see here is that our intent would be to fill these classes as much as possible for our students who wouldn't normally be attending our schools and bring that ADM by offering an option for them. Mr. Bitterman has spent quite a lot of time, and I just selected some samples, this is not the whole spreadsheet, looking at what we would need to do in order to expand this to the full school. And so as we're looking at this chart, you can see, this is a sample of kindergarten in first grade, and then I have fourth grade and fifth grade on there, just the kinds of things. So at the primary grades, we have our language arts program. Each of the grade levels is noted for what's called a starter kit, which is everything they would need for the language arts portion. The starter kits range in cost based on the kinds of things that come with it. And then, the history and geography, you'll notice that it's up here twice, because currently it's in a downloadable form, so that is a free download, we do not have to keep it up, but if we use the free download, we'd have to print everything, et cetera. And so what we did is estimate in the maximum cost if we were to order the history materials. So we could get it as a free download in fourth grade, or in the process, $1,352 in fourth grade for the history materials. The mathematics, you'll notice is the same, the mathematics that's being used is Singapore map, that is the same per grade level for the adoption. And then, the science, there is some free downloadable materials in science, there's also some texts that can be purchased, and then there's a visual arts and music component as well. And so each of the grade levels, there's a different total. Ironically, the most expensive grade level is third, because of the kinds of things. But what happens in the, starting with third grade, is we add in the well-ordered language, and that is the grammar series, and that's very specific grammar instruction that's integrated in. And then there are some school-wide texts, and what you see here, actually, the school-wide texts for art is only $50. There's some school-wide English, some school-wide history, and then there's some school-wide science, so that the science can be taught. science, so that the science can be taught throughout the school using a whole series of different books. There's also a nice-to-have list, which is some of the things that as a school, it would be very, it would be great to have, those might be things we could get through donations. There is professional development in these two per, and there's math manipulatives. So these are the kinds of things that were figured into the cost for actually going for the school-wide. So when you look at the, the running total, let me go back one for just a second. Each of these amounts is for one classroom, and you remember we have two per grade level. And so you're taking what it would cost for all of those classrooms at seven grade levels, and then doubling that for a total of eighty-five thousand eight hundred in classroom materials. If we were to add the additional school-wide texts, then the running total, that thirty-two thousand three brings us up to about one eighteen. Adding in the math manipulatives and the professional development brings the total amount, this is for buying everything, total amount school-wide would be one hundred and thirty-one three sixty to expand it to a school-wide program. If we had the nice-to-have materials, those would bring it up to about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Again, those aren't necessary, they would be lovely to have, and those might be an area that we could find contributors for. So, so we're estimating that to go school-wide for next year, it would be a hundred and thirty-one thousand three sixty. The other thing that is important to note is that for the mathematics materials, they are consumables. And so there would be an additional ten thousand dollars per year that we would need to commit to this program to replace those consumable texts. As you can see from our number of students, just bringing in three or four students would probably cover them. Now, in our budget process, back in the spring, when we were talking about going to the magnet program, we actually allocated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pilot the K-1 and expand by grade level out of our instructional improvement fund. So this was one-time money that we had that we needed to spend, it had been accumulating, and it was actually restricted money for innovations in education. And so out of that hundred and fifty thousand, Mr. Ritterman, who has been cruel as it was his own, has been, has spent about seventeen thousand for this year. And so we actually currently have a hundred and three thou, thirty-three thousand sitting in that instructional improvement fund for the magnet expansion year by year that would fully cover the costs, would not have an impact on the budget for our expansion, should we choose to go that way. So that is the conclusion of the presentation, and if you would like, we'd be happy to answer any questions. You want to ask me, or Mr. Ritterman, or do you want me to sit down?
May I take your indulgence to present Mr. Ritterman with the call?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is spelling included in this program?
Is spelling included? That's part of the phonics program, that's part of our district-wide in the discovery funding.
We already have that?
Yes, yes. That's something, by the way, that Mrs. Douglas also addressed. More to be remembered that the K-3, our curriculum is a reading mastery, discovery phonics, and we recommitted, we, we, what we call, resupplied all of our kits, and Mr. Gardner was diligent in ensuring that every single one of our K-3, as well as all of our special education teachers, went through that training again this year, this last year. And so they are back into it and fully trained, but that program is a very research-based phonics, reading, and spelling and writing program. District-wide.
Do we have any questions from the audience? Comments, observations? Yes?
Is the program?
If, if you can go to the question.
My name is Lisa Ramon. I was curious if the program is responsive to children with special needs? If someone has an IEP, can they take her?
The answer is yes. This program, and I thank you for asking that question, is designed for this. Yes.
Any other questions, comments from the audience? From the board?
I have a question, a comment. Marcia Cox. So it seems to me with the future forecasting that our superintendent and board put aside this money, and with the, I think you said it took about twenty-two students to be able to accumulate the dollars that we would have to have going forward for the future expenditures?
Actually, twenty-two students is a hundred thousand, so, so, you know, five would be, what, twenty-five thousand? Six students would be around twenty-five thousand, so that would be the number that would be just to, just to keep the consumables down. So the expectation would be that as we continue to grow this program in Ora Grande, that we would attract students from some of the other schools, either Calvary or the school that we know is being, I think Lady of the Lakes is starting to get their donations to build their K-3 six, I mean, see the K-3 six or K-3 eight, but I know they're building a classical education school, but it's going to compete with our public school, which will pull more kids out of our public school, which will be sad. And that concerns me, but I guess that would be the part that I would want to make sure of. And as I have read throughout the school districts statewide, this is one of the concerns that I have, is that all of the school districts that are facing these problems of declining enrollment are seeing their kids go to the private schools. And so by seeing this be a very proactive stance on our part, I congratulate you for doing this, but it does look like that, by having this. And I think at one of the meetings that we had, some of the parents, and I don't know if any of the parents of the, of the kids that are at the kindergarten or first grade are here, but it seemed like there was just such a positive impression from the parents that were at some, at one of the last meetings, and it's, and we're still obviously wearing that.
Yes, and I think, Mr. Ritterman, I believe that this year we brought in four students that would not have come to our school other, school otherwise.
It was five. We brought in five, with the, the ability that they have children at younger ages, so we see that going through, because we have a pretty big family, eleven, I believe, total, just based on those five coming in.
And there was, there was one child that was in a special needs class or something, and had come in and was, oh, thank you for.
Comments from the audience, questions from the audience, comments or questions from the board?
I have a pad with all my favorite, or my questions are not in my box, forgot it. Is there a plan for post-sixth grade, or will they just be integrated into the federal?
We actually have talked about that briefly, and it would be something for the next year or so, but they would be integrating into the federal. The idea would be that there would be some teachers that would have sections that would be classical, or there might be a team that emphasizes that. Or depending, we kind of have to see how it goes, because they aren't going to be fully classically educated in just the one year at sixth grade. The idea could also be that they would move into some of the large classes. So we haven't fully fleshed that out, but we have identified that we would move that through into the middle school and high school. The other thing that we didn't address was language, and that is something that we still would like to look to adding in the Hillsdale curriculum, they do have Latin at third grade, and so we're looking at it. We have found a high school Latin program that, once we get to that point, we're ready for a high school Latin, but it's getting there.
You may want to look at the Montessori schools for Latin. I've seen that, so. Anything else from, from the audience on this? From the board?
I just wanted to say that I'm incredibly grateful for all the work that Mr. Ritterman and the two teachers, and the staff really, that have supported the teachers as well at the school, and just really grateful that you're so excited about it, and so excited for so.
Anything else from the board?
Well, I'm, I'm going to say that I'm, I'm very happy that this is going forward. I, I have never had a parent, and I haven't sat in this chair on, on the dais for that long, but I've never had a parent actually put ink to paper and write and, and express that they're happy with something until this. I, I think that's a, that's a very pleasant surprise, and knowing some of the politics behind the people who are writing, it's not right or left, it's everybody. This is, this is something that kind of leads all the way forward. I know that we've had at least one student that came to us through Childfind through the developmental preschool that's enrolled in this program, who is very successful. And so from my perspective, from what I see, and, and again, I say here as a father of four children in our district, wow, this is going to be fun, this is going to be good. So to see us raise the bar and raise the standard a little bit, I think is a, is a very good thing. So if there's no other comments from our fellow board members, I will call for the question.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Okay. Item six point one of our agenda is approval of the Reading Horizons annual software license issued by Mr. Gardner.
Mr. President, the governing board members has recommended the governing board approve the purchase of the Reading Horizons software, which supports the adoption of Reading Horizon Discovery Phonics program in the amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Smoke Tree Anonymous and Havasu High receive performance funded, based funding for the fiscal year 2017-18. The funding is based on overall student academic growth. The funds may be used to enhance and replicate programs that are in place. Principals of these sites request the purchase of the upgrade of the Reading Horizons Discovery Phonics software, which supports the Lake House Unified School District commitment to a research-based K-3 reading program, and which meets the criteria required by the state for the move on the reading mandate. Reading Horizons is the most advanced adaptive and prescriptive reading software available. The methodology makes reading instruction more enjoyable and effective for students and teachers alike by making it both simple and engaging. With this program, each of the schools mentioned receive unlimited access to Reading Horizons Discovery online software for grades K-3 through end of the tracked term. This program may be replicated if being successful, so that access to remaining three elementary schools may be granted in the following year. The district originally purchased this software as part of the Reading Horizon Discovery program, so staff is familiar with the technology. The business department approved this item.
I'll entertain a motion on six one.
I make a motion to approve six point one.
Got any discussion on it?
So this is a phonics program. Do we also have a, what used to be called a basal reader? Do we have, what, what do we have for, for reading?
We still have basal readers.
We do have basal readers for first through sixth grade?
Yes.
So we've already, what's the name of that program?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you, but I can find that.
Okay. Well, that's okay, I bet somebody in the audience knows. Just hold him, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the audience, from the board?
So I'm just curious, in light of the reminder of our reading in the state and all the testing, and the testing keeps changing, so are we going to, I know that we're not doing this for all the schools this year, so what are we going to test before and after to measure the success so that we can then determine to bring, we're not going to use the state test to do that?
No, we have, we still have the MAP reading program, which is that assessment for the primary grades, and we still have STIBLES that will, that does the diagnostic testing to see their progress.
Okay. So that's how we'll measure this particular program?
Yes. Well, yes.
And all the other schools? Do they all use STIBLES at the elementary schools?
Anything else? I, I'd just like to see us fix the typos in that quote before we, I just, I just found a little humorous when I'm looking up the quote, get down here, and partner sp, P-A-R-N-T-P-R.
It's right in the next ones. All the same orders are there.
Anyway, with that, I think we should call the question.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. Item six point two is the approval of the agreement from Lake House Unified School District Number One and Mojave County Community College District educational programs. Mr. Draper?
Yes. Mr. President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board approve the intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between Lake House Unified School District Number One and Mojave Community College for dual enrollment courses, retroactive to the executed date accompanying MCC's administrative signature. This agreement has been reviewed by our legal as well.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on six point two.
Settle it.
Settle it. Comments, questions?
So now that we have the IGA, was it just, that we didn't have, that we didn't get it before the contract was executed by MCC, or is this the normal timeline? Because we didn't see this until after the work session.
I can respond to that. Looking back over the course of several years, this has come before the board in differing months. So my office is now, has now calendared this to be a June-July regular proposal or action I have brought before the board.
And I did, I know that at the work session, Mrs. Cohen had requested the list of the dorm classes, and I did think all of that, and if you did get it, I might have a hard copy here.
I did get it. I have it here. I do have it.
Have we pressed it?
I have it here. So it was still confusing even once I went through this, looking at honors, dual enrollment, AP, well.
Olive.
And then, but I was surprised that the, in looking at it closer, that the CTE were honors courses. So what makes, that seems surprising to me, that journalism and publication was an honors course. And maybe there's not an answer for that right now, I'm not sure.
That would be the next one.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
We did this last time.
I wasn't going to correct you.
Okay. That's okay, I can handle it.
Yeah.
Anything else on six point two?
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes. Six point three is the approval of new courses that Lake House Unified School for the 2019-2020 school year. Mr. Draper again.
Yes. It is recommended that the governing board approve the attach list of new courses for the 2019-2020 school year at Havasu High School. The following courses have been added with aforementioned course descriptions attached in their documents.
Okay, I'll entertain a question on six point three.
I make a motion to approve six point three.
Settle it. Discussion?
Okay, so, why, why are the digital communication, journalism, and publication Okay, so, why are the digital communication, journalism, and publication honors courses?
The individual that teaches this class approached me because our students are going through the sequence, and then when they're getting to that point, because our students are concerned about being in the top twenty and where they rank in their class, and they are not completing the entire sequence because they are not allowed to get that honors credit in that last year. So kids are going through that program and then stopping when they're going to go into that, I mean, into journalism, and then they take a different pathway because they cannot earn that honors credit. There was research at state level to see if it was offered at other schools in our state, and there are other schools that offer these two specific programs with honors attached to it as well.
Was that the same thought process for math and money?
Yes.
They were taking it because it earned, okay. And then I wondered if the, you know, our kids go on a lot of trips and they, you know, do a lot of travel, but for this particular, these two particular courses, it's requiring them to put together portfolios? Does that, could that ever be shared with the board? It would be really nice for the board to see what kind of portfolios the kids are putting together, you know, that they're competing with, or maybe when they're done with the competition or whatever, but to then bring it to the board, so we have an idea of what's being done.
Absolutely.
Be nice.
And maybe you can report those?
I cannot answer that question. I know that in later, later months, you will be, you will have all these students graded in front of you that compete at the state level, who win awards for themselves as well as representing our district, so those individuals that are in these classes are the ones that will be graded before you as well, and I don't know if that's the appropriate time to be able to share that information with you at that time as well. But that's one of our longer board meetings, so I'm trying to recognize everybody.
I know that we recognize them, but I just mean, I'd like to actually see the work that they do that gets them to the level where they compete and win these awards, so. And it doesn't have, for me, it doesn't have to be on the same night, I mean, it doesn't even have to be a board meeting, I would just like to be able to see it.
I think one of the things that we could do is maybe schedule to start, have not early on anything, and do the student presentation component, where we have several of our Schools USA students come and present samples of what they do at their competitions, but wouldn't that sort of be every student, but maybe just kind of an overview for the world on what the students are able to accomplish? We haven't done that before, but I think it would be fun.
I think it would be nice, because we do see them when they come in, and they're to be recognized, but we don't have concept of what that really means, because we're not there.
And, and a side note that, and it's not on here, but medical terminology and things of that nature, seven of our students were just pending their CNA tonight as well, so the students that are going through these programs are turning out the certificates and things that they can use in the professional world as well.
I have a question on that rural geography, because that's a new social studies course. Do you have someone on staff currently that has enough hours in geography to teach that class?
As far as certifications, and Jamie can correct me if I'm wrong, because we spoke, as long as they are not teaching full-time geography, which we do not offer full-time, then we're okay at that.
I mean, I guess I got a master's degree in history, in social studies?
And you're off the board now, so.
Now, because it was an extended major, but, you know, I would feel if all of a sudden someone said, hey, you're going to teach geography, and I didn't have a number of classes in it, I, it would really be hit or miss. And then, the other thing I'm a little concerned about is there won't be a textbook, I think you mentioned that in the work session, and there's no curriculum, and the only thing that bothers me sometimes is, I think sometimes when you're putting in courses, it just seems to me like curriculum is the foundation, that we should have curriculum, and then all of a sudden everything else goes into it, and, and I just, and I just guess I'm mentioning that as a cautionary note, because it's nice to go ahead and add courses, but all of a sudden you get them started, you don't have curriculum, you're going to have a new teacher in there, you don't have textbooks, and to me, it's the ingredient for not meeting your mission, or, I hate to use the word failure, but I'm very much on that, that everything is sequential when you put in something, it's well thought out, and then when you put it in, you're ready to go on it, so, you know, I just want to, and I'm sure you're aware of that, but I know this would concern me, and it does concern me as a board member.
Yes, in the, in the back, if you could come up to the mic, please.
Just based on what Mr. Rooney said, I would have the same question about the Spanish conversation in the culture class. Is there good academics and good structure for that, or is that going to be kind of a basket leading collective, for a little better term, I guess, but is there an academic structure for it and the goal?
The, the goal for that is to provide a Spanish class for our students that aren't necessarily looking to get their, their two years of Spanish under their belt to go on to the collegiate level, but to expose them to the Spanish language as well during that class.
And then, of course, my concerns with the CTE class, or the criminal law class. And, so this class we had last year, we're adding the, or they're proposing to add, oh, is that another action item?
No.
Okay.
Criminal law and procedures and crime scene management.
Other, so this class is from last year, it was new last year, but we're adding the crime scene management. But this wasn't the description for criminal law, or the law in public safety class last year. This description has changed.
It's a different class?
This is an additional class, it's not the same class.
This is an, this is an additional year past the first year of the CTE class.
Okay. So then, regardless, I still have a problem with the criminal law and procedures portion, and for the same reasons, but also as I discussed, so I don't know if you have any information on that, based on our session conversation, I just don't think our kids are ready for this kind of course.
As far as, and correct me if I'm wrong, from, from the work session, your concern at that time was the, the basic understanding of the constitution and how it applies to these situations. So I am going to ask Lori, our teacher who is in the classroom and feels with that on a daily basis, share exactly how she addresses your concern.
Okay, so, the reason I wanted to add this class is the introduction to public safety in the advanced classes, don't really touch on the criminal law, criminal procedure, and a lot of that does have to do with constitutional law, which is what I wanted to get more into, because the kids like taking court cases and talking about them, and taking them apart, and figuring out, you know, why the Supreme Court ruled how they did. And in all of the classes, we do talk about the constitution and the amendments, because that's basically what police work is. I mean, everything we do as police officers has to do with the constitution or an amendment, so it's definitely included in that, and the kids asked for a third level, so that's what I came up with, to give them more to build on what they're already learning.
So, here's my concern last year, and it was a concern the first year that we had the class, the difference between the constitution and constitutional law. And I know Mr. Moss came into the class the first year and had that conversation, although I wasn't there, or I don't remember there, but I wasn't there for, he did it for three days, I think, so I wasn't there the whole time. But that's a concern for me, because if our kids are talking about why the Supreme Court ruled the way they did, and they don't have the foundational knowledge to understand the background of the constitution, well, then we're just talking about current events and opinions, really, sprinkled with the text of the constitution without really understanding what it means. And I say that fully believing what I'm saying, because I've been reading it and trying to study it, and it's not something that you get in a semester. So to then have discussions around what's taken place without a foundation concerns me, especially pornography and pedophilia in this, I think that's totally inappropriate. I mean, everybody knows kids are off limits, we don't need to have discussions about that. These aren't, you know what I'm saying? I don't think, in the long list of things that were half listed here.
Well, the way this is designed to work is level one and level two is where they are building the foundation of their knowledge, then level three, they move into the criminal law and criminal procedure, and then crime scene is their third year. So they're building each year on the information that they're learning. Now, I did open, I don't have a prerequisite for the criminal law and criminal procedure, because there are students that don't want the policing aspect, they might want to be an attorney, or a judge, or work in some kind of court job, and they only want to learn about the law and the constitution. So it's designed to be three levels for those that need to go all the way through, but then it's also designed for students that just want the law portion.
So has there been any thought about, as part of the criminal law and procedure course title, to just have the constitution? To like, have a whole course just on the constitution, so that there is a foundation? Because just talking, I'm, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I'm just saying, they're not building knowledge unless they have been entrenched in it for years.
At the third level, we'll have already had two years of this class, where the constitution is put into those classes.
So then, we should be able to give them all a test before they move on to the next level, to test their knowledge on the constitution as a prerequisite before they would take anything beyond the given class? No?
Don't you have to follow the guidelines of the state, the CTE program, or?
Yes.
Standards for each program? Is there a class in the CTE criminal law program for just the constitution, or would be deviating from the other requirements to have a whole program?
I'm not sure, when I was looking through the Arizona State courses, these are the two that I found, that the kids were wanting more of, which is why I chose this one. I mean, I can always go back and look through the catalog to see if there is a constitutional law just for that, but this is basically criminal and constitutional law put into one, to one class. But they're also learning it in the first two years that they're in this program. It's just building.
And then there'd be some kind of a conflict, students have to take civics, and they normally take it one semester their senior year, so if they've already taken some of them, they're already taken this class, constitutional law, earlier on, then right now, according to my understanding of the state requirement, those same students would still have to take the constitution again when they became seniors, they got the civics. Right, Jamie?
It's not really the constitution, is it?
Yes, but A, you never get too much constitution, and B, civics is more than just the constitution. But I, to me, I feel like this is, this is the law related, like, while the first two are building that, to me, this is a study of the law behind it.
Correct.
When you think the constitution, it's, you're kind of almost going with a lot of theory, this is applied, and I think high school kids get interested, I think they'll get more interested in the constitution, and they'll see all the conflicts through taking a class like this, and by the time they take civics, their senior year, they're going to have a lot better background than other kids who've never had it earlier. I mean, it's just a way of reaching kids' interests, really, but that's how I see it. I don't know, I don't know.
What curriculum are you going to use to teach the class with? Is there something pre developed, or are you going to be developing curriculum from scratch?
I haven't seen a curriculum, but I, this is actually like my eleventh year teaching and I'll top four years of college, so I have material and I can build my own curriculum. That's basically what I'm doing now with the standards that I have for the first two classes.
So, so the subject and content of this class will change over time, or we haven't really determined whether or not, what's on the list in our packet is a final list for the curriculum?
I'm still kind of working on how I want it to flow, and then putting the curriculum in. If I have material, it's just building the curriculum for the class for next year.
Where did the verbiage come from for this particular course?
The Arizona State Catalog of Approved Courses.
And CTE's name?
Is, is there a state requirement for a third year of this course?
It's not a requirement, it just says you can add a third year.
But to complete, you need a third year?
Complete.
A CTE.
The CTE.
To be a completer.
Is there, is there a certificate attached to this course?
Uh, no.
To the program, excuse me. For the CTE ones, you finish the CTE ones, there's a certification attached to this?
No.
Is there one available, or what's?
So in, when we look at, I'm thinking about the, all of the different lists, I'm going to speak a little bit, maybe not exactly in Arizona law terms, but typically, students are reading a course sequence in CTE, they start with a level one, and then there's a term for when they've taken the second course, but to actually be considered a CTE completer, which means they've completed a course sequence, they're asked to do three courses in the sequence. And so for students to, to be counted as either completing the sequence of college pathway, like the A Bor, what do we call those, is it the A Bor sequence? Or, or a CTE sequence, there's a certain number of courses that are involved. I did ask Mrs. Becker if she would provide for me the, because I tried to do a little bit of research on this as well, on the, what are the sequences for the different ones that we've had, and so every time we start a program, we typically build on, so you don't offer all three of the course sequences and then you first start the program, but this could be our third year coming up of the program. And the idea would be then that we could actually have students who would be completing a third year of course sequence of CTE in that criminal law area. This is not one of the areas that we can certify, they do have to go to the college for certification.
I have a question, this is aptly heard of this. Wouldn't it be appropriate to have a study of the Arizona constitution in this course? And I, I don't know, I just, that to me would be really important, the law course, maybe a worthy addition to lay out the difference between the US constitution and the Arizona constitution, and how that affects police work, and so I get that, you can make, I'm just having my.
Right, I would agree, yeah.
Would you be open to dropping, in crimes related to child pornography and pedophilia from the course description?
Well, I would have to agree that I don't really like that wording, I just copied it from the.
Sure, I understand.
The, you know, state. Now, not to say sex crimes won't be mentioned, I mean, you know, they're, but we're not going to, the labor or.
It just, just seems like it's an essential focal point of the course, the way that it's way out.
Yeah, I don't like the way it's worded either, because I really kind of just brushed over anything like that, but I think students need to know certain things that are illegal for them, especially at their age, but it's not going to be like a whole, you know, it'll be a very brief part of going through the criminal law.
So, what's the, what, is this like juniors and seniors here usually?
Yes, I think they're. Yes, I think they're going, they said maybe 10 graders, but even right now, I mostly have juniors and seniors.
Okay. So, you know, like you said, you're not going to go into detail, but it's definitely a part of life, if they read the newspapers and stuff like this, or watch the news, they're aware of that, and, you know, I don't think you keep kids in the dark about stuff, and...
I don't think they're in the dark about it.
Well, that's what, I know that, so, I mean, what I'm saying here is, you know, you don't, but, but you can bring that up, because it's a fact of life, that this is going on, and it seems to be, you know, a sort of a problem. And, so, you know, I mean, if we're going to educate kids, we, then let's educate this stuff. And so, that doesn't bother me as much, if, you know, but, and like you say, it's what they put in here, you would have probably dealt with a little differently.
Right.
Actually, Superintendent has the standard that goes against it. And the standard, I skimmed it very quickly, and I didn't see a lot of what's listed in the course description, in the standard. So, looking at the standard, what we're actually going to teach it to, I, I don't, I have an objection to that.
Glad to hear that.
I have an objection to the course description, and I have this feeling.
Now, these are the general standards for the CTE Law and Public Safety Sequence, so it doesn't mean that all of these standards are going to be addressed in every course. But they do identify, looking at, I'm sorry, I haven't looked at them that carefully here.
There's, there's one there about peer pressure, and there's, there's some actually good, just in skimmin', there's some good subject matter backing brought to attention in standards.
And the reason I brought the idea of the standards out is that, as we're talking about, even like with world geography, or with the CTE sequence, they, they do have a set of standards that they have to follow. So, as we have the conversation, we identify this, what is it that we expect students to learn, and then we identify the materials to go with that. So, I know that as they're developing the courses, I know Mr. Becker and his team, as teachers, have talked about what would be some courses that we should offer students, they've, they've done that review, and so, these are the standards, these are some things that we think that our students will benefit from, and we interest them, and so, they're proposing to design a course, which in the first year is, first is what are we teaching, and then what are the appropriate materials to do so? And so, that, that is going to be, essentially, if the course is approved, and then if students actually sign up and think a course, that the teachers have been identifying who will teach these courses, and are beginning to be providing with that. Then it's not, we don't have that detail yet.
Could we, because this is a course description, and it will go into the course description book that the high school puts out, could we just end, in main, of course, kind of including specific types of crimes, such as vehicle crimes, personal crimes, cyber crimes, and drug crimes, period, and end it there?
I, yeah, I think that's a better way to describe it, for the children.
Well, all of those crimes, personal crimes, they're, they're all there.
Okay. Yeah. Kind of like that.
Did you write that later, or was it just, I mean, you wanted?
So, it doesn't seem like there's any avenue, that I've seen yet, where we think that it's important for our kids to have just a Constitution class?
I, I think.
And that's concerning to me, because, by my estimation, the reason why we suffer a large proportion of, proportion of the dysfunction at the state level, level, and the federal level, is because our legislators and congressmen don't even know the Constitution. And so, they're making policy that, you know, screws us all eventually, pardon my French. But, so the idea that we would bring this course without, and I think it should be standard, I mean, I think we should be teaching our kids about the Constitution at appropriate levels from kindergarten on, but, when we're going to start to go into this field, or we're going to try to get them involved in government, it seems like that would be, and this is not your fault, I'm just talking because it's the time, it seems like it would be the time to start discussing where's our Constitution course. And even if that just, you know, there's a lot of free courses that, that our kids could take, it's not even something somebody would have to put together, but there should be some sort of requirement before we start pushing all this other stuff on them. Not that they don't want it, of course they want it, it's fun, it's exciting, they watch CSI, and that's why, you know, there's an interest, I want to do those kind of things too, but there's also a very real responsibility in having a knowledge, no?
Yes, I was just having a side conversation, because I know that Mrs. Dable is more familiar with the social studies sequence. I do know that the Constitution is visited at various grade levels to a certain degree. The, I, I personally couldn't speak to the depth at which they cover the Constitution, and so, the level of exposure that they've had or not, and I don't, is it also included in US History?
It's included, yes.
So, in 11th grade, they're taking US History, which covers the Constitution. So, there, I mean, there is that, it's not exclusively a Constitution class, and that might be, you know, another discussion for an elective, it's unfortunate.
I'd, I'd actually like to see an elective that included now the Constitution in the federal's papers.
You know, the thing is, what I think we sometimes fail to realize, is at the high school level, it's like, US History, and it's for a year, right? It's a survey history class. I mean, to cram history in from the discovery of America, all the way to the current time, you're, you're moving through it, and what you're trying to do is give kids an idea of some of the things that have happened in this country. Now, a good teacher is going to encourage them to do reading and all that type of stuff. Civics is a survey, is a survey political science course, and, I agree, at the beginning, what you're going to do is you're going to start out, and, and you're going to probably talk about the Mayflower Compact, one of the first political things when the settlers got here, among the pilgrims, so that they had to agree to do certain things before they got off the boat. Then, you're going to expand that in there, but what you don't understand is that it's a survey class, and the kid is not going to walk out with the, the knowledge of, of a college person. Once you get onto college, you can go ahead and you can start focusing in on these things. You know, we're trying to educate, and, and, and we used to have, do we still have Arizona History?
It's within US History.
It used to be a separate course, and so, you had Arizona History, and you talked about Arizona government. But you can only, you know, people say, well, let's add this elective. How many courses are required at high school now, to graduate?
Twenty-three degrees.
Okay, but I mean, how many are required courses, like civics and US, civics, US History, free enterprise?
Four credits math, four of science.
Four English.
Four English.
Seventeen.
One BE.
Seventeen.
Oh.
Seventeen.
Yes, Sarah, I think there's seven electives.
Seventeen, because there's six electives.
So, you know, you get to a point that a kid, you're, you're going to have to take so many required courses to get through school, you only have so much time, in order to graduate from high school, it's what, twenty, is it 22 or 23 now? Twenty-three now. So, you've got to keep that in mind. And, and if you think that person's going to walk out and can teach a college course, or is a PhD and expert on something, you're unrealistic. Oftentimes, these, the US History, free enterprise, all these things, you're cramming stuff in there, you only have so much time, like a semester, it's a survey class, to give a kid an understanding of what is important. And then what happens is if they go on, they don't even have to go on, if they're, if you're educating them to become lifelong learners, they're going to start doing reading and all that, it'll spark up their mind and whatever, but you can't cram all that into four years. And I, and I agree, a good, a good civics teacher is really going to come down early and spend so much time on the Constitution, but they can't spend 18 weeks on it, and expect them to walk out and have an understanding of how the federal government works, how state government works, how local government works, how a whole variety of political entities work in the country. It's just unrealistic.
I would like to propose a different situation. I wasn't, I was not going to get on the sub box until next year, January, but I see a need for civic education put all the way back into elementary school, and it can be included with social studies, but I believe there has to be an emphasis on that, that, you know, how many kids have even heard of the Articles of Federation? I mean, teachers just have to skip over that, they shouldn't, there's probably federalist papers and things like that, that you wouldn't even think of, but it's, why do we do things the way we do? And there's a reason, and then you give that all of those years that the kids can keep, how many times can they hear about the pilgrims? Well, they need to hear more about the Mayflower Compact, they, there are other things they need to understand about contracts and compacts, and how people who disagree come together and agree on things, and solve problems, that type of thing. And, I mean, our, our whole country, the history of our whole country is about that kind of thing. And to me, it would be so much easier to spread it all the way out, through, starting maybe in first grade, with little terms and things, and then they, they come on, and they begin seeing this, by the time they get to high school, they have a real background. I think that that's, that's the answer, to spread it out over a lot of years. And we're, and one of the reasons I'm, I'm bringing this up, is that we're going to have curriculum committee meetings in January, is that right, January?
Certainly.
And that's one of the things that I hope to, to get brought up, because I'm seeing that Americans don't understand anything about how our Constitution is, or how it works, or our US History. And I think it's just very evident right now, that that, that's what's going on, and it alarms me, and I think that we need to put something like that in place, it sticks.
Amen.
Yep.
Mr. Becker, if you can find a teacher, I, I personally would like to see a survey level US Constitution and federalist papers elective at that school, if you can find a teacher.
I have a question. Has Board already talked about getting 5,000-year leave in? I thought that was discussed at one point in the curriculum, or as a course in itself.
We had never discussed that as a board, we had discussed the principles of liberty out of the 5,000-year leave during our philosophy discussion, for our curriculum philosophy, but that, I mean, like, as a textbook, it has, it has not come before the board, so I don't know.
So, I see one of the areas that we need to look at again, too, is the, is, and again, I have no information, so I'm speaking blindly, in terms of what is the progression in our current, our new adopted social studies standards, because I have not. And so, one of the things would be for us to look at, where do things fall, and then as we talk about, we do have the opportunity, as a local district, to determine what it is we want our students to learn. We've said repeatedly that our state standards are our minimum standards, and so we need to, to really spend time, and because we have new standards now, is that the time to look at our social studies sequence throughout K through 12.
I have a question. Do any high schools in Arizona require students to take, say, take a test, the test that our immigrants have to take to get their citizenship? Do any high schools require that as a graduation requirement? They're like, yes. The state does. The state law. One of the first bills Governor Ducey passed when he came into office, was that the, there would be a civics test, it has to be taken somewhere between eighth grade and graduation of high school, it's self-reported, it's the citizenship test that new citizens take. Our students only have to have a 60% to be deemed passing. And we're, they're, now, the state board is going out for another RFP for another type of, it's not quite the same, but there's some other civic testing, or maybe it's an alternate test.
Do we get that test at high school?
Yes.
And how do the students do on it?
They pass.
They have to pass to graduate.
How many kinds can you pay?
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
You don't need to take it.
But literally, the children come, it's like, what I used to do is fun bellwork, the kids all come, and they can all, for the most part, do it the first time.
First time.
They know the colors of the flag. But that's what the test is, it's not.
Not to lose your house, you'll do that.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on six three?
So, on that, just as a reminder, the, the reason that course descriptions come to you at this time of year is because of needing to plan their schedules, do their course list, students, cost selections, et cetera, so there is a, a timeline in terms of the process, or?
Is there, is there a reason why you can't have a requirement for Constitution, for regulation?
Oh, yes, Martha Cox. I, I think, I think we have a lot of required basic history and social studies courses. I think that you're going to find that some students are going to take very well to the deeper look at the Constitution, some won't. So, I have it in elective and seeing how that goes.
Maybe do two of the courses.
Okay. Anything further on six three? Going once, going twice, call Terry.
Okay, I'm sorry. We have a motion to include the revision of the description on the criminal law procedures.
Who, who made the motion, Terry?
Ms. Nicole.
Nicole, will you amend your motion for the revised, on the criminal law procedures?
And crimes related to child crimes.
Okay, who's second name?
Ms. Terry.
Ms. Terry, will you amend your second?
Yes, I will.
All right. Now, let's call it.
Nicole Cohen?
No.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes. Item 6.4, approval of class fees if they tap the high school for the 2019, 2020 school year, Mr. Becker.
Mr. President, members of the board, it's recommended that the governing board approve the attached list of new course class fees for 2019, 2020 school year at Lakeview High School. The ones that are asterisks are indicating that they are good courses.
I will entertain a motion on 6.4.
Can I make a motion? 6.4.
Discussion on 6.4? Attorney in Ontario, call for the vote.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
No.
John Mastin?
Yes.
6.5, is approval of voucher student activity funds and auxiliary funds, Mr. Murray.
Mr. President, members of the board, it's recommended the board approve vouchers for November 2018, as well as student activity funds and auxiliary funds for October 2018.
I will entertain a motion on 6.5.
Seven minutes left.
Any discussion on 6.5? Attorney in Ontario, call for the vote.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
And then, item 7, our information report, Superintendent Sager.
Thank you, Mr. Mastin, members of the board. Just, at this time of year, and I know that Mrs. Douglas already mentioned this, and her remarks is one, that we do want to extend our some of the fees to the family. We lost on the real site, I can't even imagine the best, but I want to know that everyone in the district, we do, that's a great idea. As far as other reports, we do have reports from each of our directors this month, providing information, if you have any questions. And of course, we do always want to thank our members. We'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday season. We'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday season, hope that we have the opportunity to enjoy some of the family friends, and we are back, the offices will be open a couple of days a week during the winter break, but we are back on Tuesday, January 8th, with our organization stepping, Mister Rooney won't be joining us at that time, and welcome our new two new board members over here tonight, and if the audience hasn't met them, we have Lisa Roman and Arshana Aliar, who will be joining us in a second.
Item eight is our second call in the public, do we have anything, Terry?
No, we do not.
Item nine is communication.
Item seven, governing board...
It's not on the agenda, we can't do it.
It is on the agenda. No, I, I delegated, it never happened.
Every, every month you do that, you...
I learned.
Mrs. Cohen.
I just wanted to thank Miss Douglas for traveling all this way, and thank her for fighting this machine with honesty, and for making it nonpartisan, which people don't understand, you know, everybody gets tagged with a label. We say we're all about no labels, but everybody labels them. You've been an incredible advocate for all of our kids, and so grateful.
Thank you.
And we did have a voice, so, I did want to note that, because it was mentioned earlier that we will finally have a voice, and I, I do want to thank you for being available to our district for the last four years.
Any board suggestions for future agenda items?
Pat would say they control it.
Pat's, Pat's got a short term of sentence.
Come to a state board meeting.
Do you have any questions on what happened tonight? If you need clarification?
I don't think so, not this time.
All right, with that, first order of business for Terry is, we have a whole pile of cookies over there, so if you like cookies, go get them, they're there for you, and maybe a couple gallons of coffee, too? Okay, if you want some coffee this way, you can have that as well. Our next regular board meeting will be Tuesday, January 15th, and that will be next year, at 6:00 PM here, and just, we part of that at 4:00 PM, will be our work session, so with that, I will entertain on January 8th. For, for those who didn't have, yes. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Pat Rooney.
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
No.
Well, just to make Pat sit for a minute, let me think about that. They'll still be there. Yes, we are adjourned.
Thank you.